We will call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. Let the real call show that all members of the council are present this evening, and Councilmember Steve Vincent has our opening ceremony this evening.
Unfortunately, I printed out what I was gonna read and I left it on my desk at work. So, I won't do that tonight, but if you would repeat, pledge allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the minutes of February 26th and March 5th to consider. Council, what's your pleasure there?
Move to accept the minutes of February 26th and March 5th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved unanimously. We come to item 6 tonight, which is our comment period. And we have two types of comment periods in our meetings. The first one is kind of just the open public comment period where anyone can come address us on any matter of their interest. And then the second one is one related to specific applications. We will be having one later in this evening, related to ordinance 1310, which is application Z-7-2012. So if you'd like to speak on that matter, we'll get to that shortly. But first, I need to open it up to the public comment period to those who've come to speak on other items. We have some people that have signed up to speak. If I get your name and what you're really here to talk about is that application Z-7-2012, which is ordinance 1310, then just pass for now and we'll catch you here in a minute. Stephen Barker, are you here for that one or for something else?
I don't know what that means.
Are you here for the zoning map, the zoning amendment, change from neighborhood commercial to...
Yes.
Okay, so hang on, we'll come back to you. Gary White. You're for that one as well. And Bill Nelson.
I wasn't signed up to speak necessarily.
You just signed the roll, just to show you're here.
That's why I give the...
I'm here about the zoning.
Okay, so we'll come to that shortly. So, city manager, council, any comments you want to make in the general comment period?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay, council, good. All right, now we'll come to item 7, and this is regarding that zoning matter. And our city manager, Wayne Pyle, will introduce that topic for us today.
Thank you, sir. So, this is an item that is sent to you on appeal from the planning commission. There is an application for a zone change from C1 to C2, neighborhood commercial to general commercial at 5619 West and 5635 West, 3500 South. The applicant is Mr. Matthew Werthlin.
Okay, thank you, sir. I see we have screens coming down for multimedia comments here. So I will now open the public hearing regarding Z-7-2012, which is this ordinance we're discussing. Is there anyone who's come today to speak for or against this matter? Okay, sir, you're the applicant, so we'll let you make your presentation and we'll continue the public hearing.
Mayor Wender, members of the city council, nice to be with you this evening. Standing to my left is Gary White. He's the property owner of the family that runs the property. And he just had a few words. He doesn't hear very well, and so he just wanted to make a brief statement and then I'll say some things.
Well, since Blockbuster vacated that property because they went bankrupt as a company, as a C1 zone, I just haven't had anybody express an interest in it, and it really needs to be passed as a C2 to make this work for the city as well as for me as a property owner. So I hope that you consider this and it goes forward.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to point out a few things as we went through the city council process. Let me say, just to begin with, my experience, yes...
I'm sorry, it was recorded, just remind. Could we get your name and your address?
Yes. My name is Matt Werthlin, W-I-R-T-H-L-I-N. I live at 2757 Willshire Drive, Salt Lake City, Utah, 401. Before I go further, I just want to mention briefly the great experience I've had in working with your staff from the very beginning at the planning commission level and walking us through this process with your city recorder and others. They really do reflect well on this great city, and I appreciate that very much. Just want to mention, the planning commission, at the planning commission level, the planning staff did recognize some existing violations of the property. The property owner is going to take care of those, and if it needs to be addressed through this process or the conditional use permit process, those things are going to be cleaned up and taken care of, the graffiti, some of the other things that have kind of fallen into disrepair. And certainly, the rezone change will help facilitate that as a new business moves in. As the owner said, you know, this is going to help fill a vacant storefront. They've been working on this now for two years and just simply have not been able to find any tenants willing to come in, able to come in with the limited opportunities under a C1 zone. And when you look at it, and you look at that corner that's blown up on the screen at 5600 West, 3500 South, three corners, all of that, southwest corner is on C2. And it would seem to make a lot of sense, given what the Hunter Town Center plan says. Retail is welcome, there should be a little bit more intensified use. To bring that all in conformity and preparation for the future and to kind of put everybody on equal footing on that corner, we think would be a positive thing. And I know at the planning commission level, there was concerns that when you change it to a C2 zone, there might be other uses or other problems that might come into play. And I think that's why it's a conditional use. And those changes that would open up under the C2 zone would be conditional use process. And so you would be able to control any possible, the statute said detrimental effects. And candidly, I don't really think there will be any with the eventual future use if it's approved. But, you know, that can all be addressed at the city council, at the planning commission level. I sit on the planning commission in Salt Lake City, so I'm familiar a little bit with the process and I fully respect that process. Anyway, we're pleased before the city, we just ask for your approval tonight.
Thank you, sir. And we may have questions after the public hearing.
Thank you.
During the public hearing, but after the public has spoken, before we close the public hearing. But thank you. Are there others who have come to speak for or against this application item? Sir, can you come up the microphone and state your name and address for our record and then say what you have...
I'm the person that signed the first, that role first, Stephen Barker, 5671 West, 3500 South, two doors down from that property on 35th. I am concerned about the types of businesses that might go in there. For example, there's been rumor that a pawn shop may go in there. I have nothing against pawn shops themselves, but I, sometimes the people that go in and out of pawn shops are not necessarily the best people to have around the neighborhood. And it is, and the reason that I think it is C1 is because it is, those other two corners, three corners that they're talking about there that are C2, don't have any residential close by. But my dad lives right next to it, right across the wall from the old Blockbuster there. And I live right next door to him, so I'm just concerned about what changing it to C2 might do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else has come to speak? Come on. And again, state your name and...
My name's Bill Nelson. Do you want my address?
Yes.
5670 Hunter Park Circle. So, and I'm well acquainted with Steve, he's actually my brother-in-law. And we live in the same neighborhood. I might have just a little differing view on this. I live behind the building that we're talking about, and the elevation is up a little higher. Where I step out on my back porch and I see the back of this Blockbuster building, and I can see the 7-Eleven and a few things. Can kind of see that property and a little bit of what goes on there and stuff. And my biggest concern is that that building's just sat empty for so long. If there's a way we could get someone in there that's gonna have a presence there and be a watch for the property, I think that would be a positive thing for the neighborhood. So, just another view.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there anyone else tonight who's come to speak for or against this matter? Okay, before I close the public hearing, we'll see if any of the council has any questions for the applicant or anyone else that spoke today. Colleagues, Mr. Vincent?
I have a question for Mr. Werthlin. Are you familiar with who the property owners to the south are at all?
I am not personally. I know Mr. White is, the property owner is.
Okay. I'm just curious if there is any intent from those, it looks like there's two more pieces of property.
Right.
If their intent would be to come back and ask for the same zone change, I have a little bit of resistance to carving out this piece without the rest of the property following suit. So, I just wondered if there had been any discussion with those other property owners at all.
We had felt just because this is in the corridor, the Mountain View corridor that's coming, it's on the corner, that the city might see a reason to have those properties zoned differently. But we haven't had any serious discussions, just because it's the one owner that owns those properties that are on 5600 West.
Any other questions for Mr. Werthlin or all he's on, council? Okay?
Thank you.
Let's see, is there anyone else who'd like to say anything, including asking a question? You need to come back to the microphone. We are still in the public comment period, so you are in order.
Okay. Steve Barker again. I just was asking, what is the tenant that you're expecting to have in there once, if it does go to C2?
And let me maybe rephrase that and broaden your question, if I may.
Okay.
As we're looking at a rezone, we're not approving a specific use or approving a potential use. So maybe it's better to have the staff refresh all of our memories, what a C2 could include.
Right.
Because just because the current owner maybe has this intention, at least we need to be thinking, what could be the one after that or the one after that? And so, is that fair if we have our staff?
That's great, yes.
And technically, whatever they're considering may or may not, in theory, it shouldn't sway us, but we should look at the overall C2 uses. So that's a great question. Could staff illuminate us on that one?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'm gonna turn that question over to Nicole or if she wants to assign Steve or somebody to fulfill that.
Yes, if Steve could please come up, he can run you right through the list.
Okay, when you look at the commercial zone, there's a list of uses that would not be allowed in C1 but would be allowed in C2. So those include automotive sales and service, car title loan business, check cashing, outdoor, or commercial outdoor recreation, concert venue, a fast food establishment, hardware store, hospital, office warehouse, parking structure, pawn shop, reception center, restaurant with liquor, sell lease of RVs, self-storage or storage units. And then there's also indoor public recreation, so...
While you're out there, could you remind us what's in C1?
Sure. So it's a fairly lengthy list, but you have a bank, let's see, commercial, and commercial indoor recreation is a conditional use. Community use, which would be anything like a church or a park or school. Convenience store, daycare, preschool, fast food if it's in a building with other tenants. So if not, you can't have a freestanding fast food, but one that's a multi-tenant building. Greenhouse or garden supply, a medical clinic or doctor's office, neighborhood grocery, neighborhood service establishment, like a haircut place, nursing home, let's see, professional office, a restaurant without liquor, retail department store, sell gasoline, shopping center, supermarkets, and that's pretty much it. And veterinary hospital, excuse me.
Thank you. Okay?
Yes.
I have a que...
Go ahead.
A question for Steve. Now, when you list the C2 uses, are all of those approved uses or are they conditional use?
Great question. So, as I look down the list here, all of the ones that I mentioned are conditional uses in the C1 zone, or, excuse me, conditional use in the C2 zone.
C2 zone, so they would still have to go through the conditional use process in order to occupy the space?
Right.
One other question while we have staff up. Do you, if a zone change is approved, are they able to, are we able to add other restrictions, noise, hours of operation, or anything else?
Generally, that's done through the conditional use process. There have been a handful of situations where we've done that through a development agreement. But again, typically, that's done by the planning commission.
So hypothetically, if we approve the rezone and they came back wanting to put a concert venue there, which, and it was a ridiculous example, but that's why it's a good one. It would work through that conditional use process and we would haggle the parameters on how late these concerts could be and so forth.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Yeah, mine was only going to be if there would be a development agreement attached to this in the actual approval of the use. So you pretty much answered that by...
Right now, as it's on the agenda, there's not a development agreement with it. If that's something that the council wanted to do, we would need to have that. My suggestion would be to have that, or decide and continue and then have that added on a future agenda.
So would that be appropriate to do now or through the planning commission if this is C2, when they apply for whatever use is going to go in there?
Well, it depends. If you're wanting to do the development agreement, where the planning commission had actually denied this request, then it would be up to the council at this point to have the development agreement. If it's just a conditional use review, then there would be no... If you don't want to have a development agreement and just, or want to leave it to the planning commission to review as a conditional use, then you could approve it tonight, so...
Good question. Anything else for Mr. Pastrick while we have him in the hot seat? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council, or before we close the public hearing? Or any other comments from the public? Mr. Werthlin?
Sorry, I know you've heard from me a lot already. I just had a, wanted to supplement my answer to, to Councilman Vincent's question. And that is just, again, to kind of focus our thoughts on the difference, one other difference between the property owners to the south and our property owners. They don't have any vacant space right now. I mean, they're full, they're running their business. And that's candidly what's driving this, so we can get, and fill this storefront, bring a business to the city and go forward. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Hey, anything else?
So one more question for staff. How long, if we continue this tonight to drop a development agreement, how soon could we hear this again so that we don't hold up the landowner? Could we see it by next week?
Okay for me to answer that in a little bit expanded form. Councilman Lang, I know that your other question was really, what's the more appropriate fashion for that? And I think the answer was for us to handle those options through a conditional use. The difficulty we'll have at this point with the development agreement is getting our arms around, either pinning down a specific use and controlling that in development agreement or putting overall controls through a development agreement on top of it, not knowing a specific use. So, it makes it a little difficult to hit the mark with a development agreement whereby we can do that as long as the council understands that the conditional use is a permitted use with conditions. With those conditions, we can most often mitigate any of those secondary type effects. And that would be the path that I would recommend.
Okay, good question. Any other questions or comments, sir?
If I may?
Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for our record and then let us know what's on your mind.
I'm Ron Barker. I live at 5655 West, 3500 South, right adjacent to this property.
I see a resemblance with others in the audience today.
Yes. We've had some good neighbors there for many years, and we've enjoyed the way they've operated their properties. But we're concerned that we understand that they're considering putting a pawn shop in. And there's so much criminal activity in that area. Recent stabbing behind the cross fence from my house, recently, and other things that are concerned. We'd like a business there that wouldn't attract even a criminal element. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to comment while we're in the public comment period? Okay, then I will now close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their pleasure. What would you like to do with ordinance 13-10 or what kind of discussion?
I have just, a couple of comments. I think it's interesting that they're worried about a potential criminal element. I think having a vacant building is more conducive to having a criminal element there. Yet on the other hand, I also am a little concerned about how close this is to that neighborhood as far as a C2 goes. But there's kind of, there's the pros and cons, as we had Mr. Nelson say, you know, if we had somebody in there, then they would keep the property up. And then we also have, well, we, maybe we don't want this particular one in there. But I think having an empty building is probably, attracts more criminal activity than having a building that has a tenant.
Okay, other comments or observations?
Just one. I would be a little bit more favorable for this to be C2 than the property to the south just because it's got 3500 and 5600 as high-impact roads on that property where the strip offices a little bit further south are buffered. And I can see those staying C1.
Yeah, I personally agree with that observation. I think when you look at C1 as neighborhood commercial, and you look at C2 as general commercial, well, if you can't put general commercial at the intersection of 5600 West and 35th South in the city, where should general commercial go? But then I think when you look at the proximity of the neighbors, that's where we want to be very careful as we go through this conditional use process to make sure that the use is coming in, the hours and the noise and any sort of impact, the proximity to the residential neighborhood is factored in certainly. Other observations, questions, or a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion and then follow it up with, I guess, some comments to support it. But Mayor, I would move approval of ordinance 13-10.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion of that? Mr. Rushton, you said you may have some.
Yeah, thanks. You know, it's funny, as we go through the list of the different things that a C2 zone permits, I'm kind of like, oh yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great. Oh, I'd go there, that'd be a good one. No, not that one, not that one, not that one, you know, type thing. But, you know, it's our job as a city council to take that big-picture view. And when we do look at it from a big picture, it, I think, is a relatively easy decision. As you stated, a busy intersection of 56 and 35. But, you know, my practical side of it, you know, knowing the Barkers here and to some of their concerns, that I share the practical concern of it too, is that, you know, I put myself in their shoes, and if I was a neighbor there, I would much rather have these buildings occupied and have the scrutiny of the conditional use process and a potential and probable likely development agreement to help clean up some of the problems that are already there and that have been noted by the property owner. And so I think it would be a good win for the neighborhood on that. The other thing, I guess I can speak to the property owner, as we have some neighbors here and myself, someone that is a proud Hunterite, someone that is, you know, has fond ties to the Hunter area and that, since you're captive here, is that I, and I know our city, has high hopes for this Hunter Town Center that we have developed on this corner. And something that flows into the neighborhood and is something that complements the existing neighbors that we have there, but also is something that is, has the neighborhood retail shops and transportation and that, that a thriving Hunter Town Center should have. And so taking this step tonight and voting yes for it and urging my colleagues to vote yes for it is something that Councilmember Vincent brought up last week, is that this is a small step, but I think an important step to having that vision of a Hunter Town Center come to fruition. And so I think all that are here tonight, you know, the neighbors and the property owners, that, you know, this is certainly just the beginning of, you know, making it what we've envisioned in that Hunter Town Center process. And so, I just, again, would just urge the approval of this tonight and then have everybody get together and work collaboratively with the neighborhood and with whoever the new tenant might be to get some of the problems cleaned up and, you know, make this an attractive spot for this important area of not only Hunter but West Valley City.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen?
I think I would also encourage the landowner to kind of listen to the residents around him and look at whatever zoning we have there, look carefully at the tenants there. You're trying to get in there. And I realize it's hard to get tenants, period. But look carefully at them and scrutinize them and make sure that they are compatible with that residential area, whether it's C1 or C2.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments to this motion? Okay, let's vote. Ms. McKendrick, let's do a real call vote on this one, please.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
No.
Mayor Wender?
Aye. I believe the ayes have it. And we look forward to seeing this project in more detail as we see the conditional use process work itself through. Thank you. And we do appreciate the residents and others that do come because your input helps us shape good policy now and as we consider other things in the future related to this. Thank you so much. We have some resolutions to consider this evening. The first one is 13-32. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. Last week, or that is, two weeks ago, when the study meeting being...
Item number eight, Mayor.
No, 13-11.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mayor, I was addressing the ordinance anyway, but...
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Number eight, 13-11.
So, two weeks ago, a discussion was considered in which we would be looking at changing the fee schedule to update the Parks and Recreation Services and amenities both by dollar amount per charge and by classification of the activity.
Okay, thank you. Council, any discussion there or a motion?
Move for approval of ordinance 13-11, second.
Okay, any discussion in that motion?
Just a comment. I've already felt it in my pocketbook because we have memberships there at the fitness center, but well worth the increased fee.
Well, in the spirit of supply and demand, if our fitness center's being loved to death and we can't upgrade equipment and carpet fast enough, then it tells me a judgment like this is probably warranted. Any other discussion?
Just, you know, I made the motion to approve it, and I too have felt it, so...
Okay. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, resolution 13-32, now we're on that one.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would allow us and would approve the purchase of maintenance equipment for the city golf courses. This would come from the reconstruction budget for the Westridge. This would come from the reconstruction budget for the West Ridge project, as well as the Stone Bridge maintenance budget, the amount of 604,900 dollars. Talking about 17 pieces of equipment for the Ridge Golf Club, and then there is one, one additional piece of equipment for Stone Bridge.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure here?
Move for approval of 1332.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose? It appears unanimous. 1333, Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. We have a project, a road construction project, a 201 south in the Frontage Road, oh, I'm sorry, not 201 south, SR 201, and the Frontage Road along, SR 201, and Commerce Center Drive. We've got 11 bids for this project. We are estimating it to be $1.8 million, and that comes from the state funds that we secured last year.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure on this one?
Move for approval of 13-33.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. 1334, sir.
Thank you, sir. And in addition to the previous resolution, this resolution also is concerned with that project and would convey property to the city in exchange for construction improvements to street and utilities.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Motion to approve, resolution 13-34, second.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That one's also unanimous. We come to item 10 tonight, which is a motion for executive session.
May our move to convene executive session for the discussions of real property and professional competency?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will go into executive session.